We got a lot of staff still talking to people.
Bang that thing.
Bang that thing.
Good morning. I'd like to call to order the Pasco County Board of County Commission 10:02 meeting, February 25, 2025. At this time, please silence all your electronics and mute your microphones, and please rise for the invocation and the pledge.
Oh merciful Creator, Your hand is open wide to satisfy the needs of every living creature. Make us thankful for Your loving providence and grant that we, remembering the accounting that we must one day give, may be faithful stewards of Your good gifts. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with clarity and justice for all.
Okay, Madam Clerk, please call Monsieur Clerk. Monsieur Clerk, please call the room.
District One, Commissioner Oakley.
Here.
District Two, Commissioner Wakeman.
Here.
District Four, Commissioner Yager.
Here.
District Five, Commissioner Mariano is not present at this time. District Three, Chairman Starkey.
Here. Okay, now is the time for public comment. Citizens are given an opportunity to comment on any current or future agenda item coming before the Board and on other business under the Board's purview. Today's public comment will be handled as follows. First, we will take public comment from those who are here in person. Then, we will take public comment from those who have pre-registered for a WebEx link and are currently on cue. We request that when you address the Board, comments are not directed personally against a Commissioner or team member, but rather directed at the issues. This provides mutual respect between Board members and the public. Okay. When, after stating your name and address for the clerk, a three-minute timer will be activated, and after two minutes, a single beep will indicate you have one minute left. When your time is up, two beeps will sound, and you should close your comments. WebEx participants will be disconnected automatically when their time is up. And, Mr. Clerk, do we have anyone signed up for public?
We do, Madam Clerk, or Madam Chair. Jenny Smithson? Jerry, sorry, Jerry.
Don't look like a Jenny, but you know.
It's the handwriting. And the eyesight. I'd like to hand these out.
Okay, and we'll need your name and address.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Well, did we state the motion?
Receiving file.
Okay, thank you. Is that okay? Is that good enough?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, name and address, please.
Yes, I'll let George talk. He's Vice President of Central Pasco and Gulf Railroad. We have a little problem, but I think...
Okay, but I need your name now just for the record.
Oh, I apologize. Jerry Smithson, 4411 Edith Street, Newport Ritchie, Florida, 34652.
Okay, and if the other don't...
And I'm George Anderson, 7821 Summer Tree Lane, Newport Ritchie, Florida, 34653.
Okay.
We're here because we are representatives. I'm the Vice President of the Central Pasco and Gulf Railroad. The County Commission invited the railroad to build, invited us to build a railroad in 2006, which we did, and we've run the railroad as a free service to the public in the park since 2006. On average, we have about 10,000 riders who take, enjoy the railroad every year. Sometimes, it's a lot more than that. The reason that we're here is that about two years ago, the Park Commission came to us and told us that we had, that they had to update our contract with the, with the county, with the park system. And we waited for about two years before a proposed contract was presented to us a few months ago. That contract is asking us to pay $5,000 a year for, and contribute more actually in, in service fees, to provide that free service for the, to the public in, in the park. And we just find it a little difficult to do, perform a volunteer service for the citizens of the county and then be asked to pay for the privilege of volunteering. I've prepared a handout here for you to give a little idea of what it is that we, that we do. And what I can tell you is that my wife is, is back here. She's one of the engineers on the railroad. The youngest person that she ever rode on the railroad was two months old. The oldest person that she ever rode on the railroad was 96, I believe it was. And the railroad gives the, the public an opportunity to go through sections of the park that they otherwise may be incapable of, of reaching, especially the younger and the older handicapped, et cetera, who cannot walk through the, through the park on their own. Those people are confined to, to looking at the paved areas of the park, and that's not what that park is all about. We feel that we provide a service, and we think that we should not be penalized for providing that service.
We don't normally engage during public comment. Is anyone who, oh, okay, we have someone from the Parks Department here, but I'm just gonna say I'm on your side. But we will, if you'll go in the back and speak with her, then we will contact you and see if we can't get this resolved, because I think you provide a great service to the community.
So Kathy Pearson, Assistant County Minister of Public Services. So, this contract has not come to you yet. We're still working on it, and we'll be sure to brief each and every one of you with that when it does come back, okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
But thank, thank you for your, for all your volunteering out there. I'll make sure to take my grandkids on there the next time they come in town. Next.
Darrell Henderson.
Good morning. I request to submit a document.
Receiving file.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. opposed? Thank you. Morning.
Madam Chair, County Commission, good morning. My name is Darrell Henderson. I am the advocacy director...
Can we get your address, please, Mr.?
My address, I, my address is 12100 Seminole Boulevard in Largo. I am the advocacy director for the Recovery Epicenter Foundation, which is based in Clearwater. Our, our mission at the foundation is to empower individuals by eliminating personal, societal, and institutional barriers to sustained recovery from substance misuse. We actively practice harm reduction strategies that embrace all pathways to recovery. Through connections with direct peer support services from persons with lived experience, we reduce stigmas associated with surviving an addiction, one person and one family member at a time. We currently operate a respite house in Clearwater. A respite house, for those of you who may not know, is a place where those seeking recovery who may fall through the critical care web, they can come and get services before they're actually admitted to a treatment facility. We provide food and clothing and shelter for them. We help them get IDs if they need it, and we help them on their way to recovery. I'm happy to let you know that we have just opened a respite house in Newport Ritchie as of last Monday. It's a 13-bed facility. We're in the process of purchasing, purchasing a van so that we can get folks back and forth across the county to services that they need. I also want to let you know that we're having a grand opening on Friday, April the 4th at 1:00 p.m., and I will be following up this meeting with invitations to each of you to attend that. We're looking forward to it, and I wanted to thank you very much for your support of our endeavors in your community.
Thank you very much, and I'm sorry Kathy Pearson has stepped out. She, she didn't hear any of these. Can you put, can you put one of your brochures over there on that table where there's an empty seat, over there? All right, thank you so much. Is there anyone else online that wishes to speak to us today?
We don't have anyone, but we have one more signed up inside, and that is Brenda Broderick.
Good morning, Commissioners. My apology, I have allergies. The purpose of my appearance, I'm Brenda Broderick. I live at 10401 Alasm Court, Port Ritchie, 34668.
Thank you.
We, my community is in an unincorporated area. We do not have a city mayor, and I don't believe we have a community advocate. And the purpose of my appearance today is to discuss the needs for progress in the revitalization project that's promised to our community. Mr. Mariano is not here. He's our County Commissioner. However, I still feel the need to bring this to the Board. Again, in keeping track of the promise, so I'm here on behalf of my community. The blighted conditions continue.
What, what is the area of your, is there a name for your community?
I live in Jasmine Lake.
Jasmine Lake.
Yes, and it's just east of Highway 19, around a circle where Day Springs Academy is.
Oh, yeah.
It used to be our clubhouse. The blighted conditions continue, the water pollution in the pond. This is a retention pond where all the veins of other collectors flow into. It's full of algae. Recently, we had 40-plus dead fish, foul smell, lack of oxygenation in the water to support the ecology balance. We do have in the water five-pound wide-mouthed bass, mullet, gators, ducks, and endangered species, the swan, the alligator, snapping turtle. Recently, a 30-pound snapping turtle approached my walkway to discuss the low-oxygen problems in the lake. Unfortunately, it had a bloom of algae all over it. The end, the embankments are collapsing and water flooding onto our property, killing our plants, grass, and trees. It's, it's a psych, this is a cyclic event. I have lived in this community for 24 years. Planting shoreline plants will not resolve this problem. The fountain, there is a triad fountain that has been there since the development of this community back in the 60s or so. And this fountain had three cascading tiers with lights. It does not have a meter where the main pump house is, and this has stopped working after a flood that we had. When the HOA maintenance agreement with the county ended, the fountain never was restored to its original working condition. And this should have reverted back to the county. This is actually county responsibility. This is county property, and it's highly used by the public. We walk our dogs, people fish in the pond. And so, I feel that this fountain and the problem with it not working aerating the water is the responsibility of the county, and it has been abandoned for over a decade now. And I've constantly asked in meetings with Mr. Mariano, when can we get this resolved? So, the life cycle is continuous with algae, phosphates, and growth, and until we have aeration, this will not be broken. So, I'm here to plead, please restore the fountain into working condition so we can aerate the water. We are reminded that these social determinants of health are the community image, the pride, the interest, the focus on environmental and health change. A lot of discussion decades or longer on this problem have taken place. Please do something about this. Stop allowing county departments...
Thank you, thank you. I think you've reached your three minutes. And I'm, I'm sorry Commissioner Mariano is not here, but I asked for some of the staff to come out, but they have not. Eric? Would it be Eric?
Eric.
Okay. If you don't mind going in the back, we'll have one of our AUCAS come speak with you, our engineer.
Thank you, Commissioners. Have a fantastic day.
You too. Yep, you too. And I know Jack's brought this up. I just don't remember if it's our, ours or responsibility of Jasmine Lakes, whether their HOA has fallen apart. They still have responsibilities. Okay. Is that, is that it for who's signed up?
Yes, that's all we have signed up.
Is there anyone else here this morning who wishes to speak to the County Commission? Okay, seeing that, we will close public comment, and we will now go on to resolutions.
Resolution number 25128, a resolution by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, declaring March 3rd to the 7th, 2025, as Newspaper and Education Week in Pasco County, and commending the Tampa Bay Times for its participation in this program. Whereas Newspaper and Education Week, an initiative of the American Press Institute, is an international program that encourages the use of the daily newspaper as an instructional, classroom tool, and is celebrated annually during the first full school week in March. And whereas for more than half a century, the Tampa Bay Times Newspaper in Education Program has served Tampa Bay educators, students, and families by providing print and digital newspapers, award-winning original educational publications, teacher guides, lesson plans, educator workshops, and many more resources at no cost to schools, teachers, or families. 10 million e-newspaper licenses and almost 200,000 print copies of the Tampa Bay Times to classrooms across Tampa Bay, and serves 756 teachers at 449 schools in Citrus, Hernando, Hillsborough, Manatee, Pinellas, and Pasco Counties. And whereas in 2023, 2024, Newspaper and Education provided 36,684 print copies and 198,480 digital licenses to 83 teachers in 36 Pasco County schools. And whereas, research shows that students using newspaper as an educational resource score more highly on standardized tests, develop the habit of lifelong reading, and are more likely to become engaged citizens and regular boaters. And whereas incorporating the Times into classroom instruction on a regular basis helps students develop daily reading habits that they will carry throughout their lives. And whereas studying today's critical issues, events, and people helps students understand the past and see a role for themselves in the future. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, that said Board hereby declares March 3rd through the 7th, 2025, as Newspaper and Education Week in Pasco County, and commends the Tampa Bay Times for its participation in this program. Done and resolved in regular session with a quorum president voting this 25th day of February 2025.
Can I get a motion?
So move.
And a second, second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Good morning and welcome. I, some, some may not know that actually my, my husband's great-grandfather, William Strob, purchased the Dunedin Times, I think it was called Dunedin, Dunedin Times, and took it to St. Pete and started the St. Pete Times way back in the early 1900s. And it was a, an evening, evening paper, and I know he said his grandmother, Blanche Strob Starkey, used to help deliver them. They'd roll them up at night and take them around the houses in St. Pete and, and deliver them. So, we, we have a long history with the Times. And I personally, I read it every day. I don't always agree with everything that's in it, but, but I do read it every day, and I, I wish, wish that you stay around for a long time. So, I know it's a tough time for the news, for print media. So, welcome here this morning, and we're glad that you're here.
Thank you. On behalf of the Tampa Bay Times, myself, Teri Williamson, we thank you for your support in helping our children grow.
That's it?
Yep.
Okay.
I'm gonna make it short and easy for you.
All right.
Just about everything I wrote anyway, so.
I, I know when I was on the school board, this was a big deal. All the, all the schools get copies of the paper and, you know, teaches kids about civics, and I think it's important. Anyone else have anything to say?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I worked at Erberich High School for 10 years, and we got the newspaper delivered, and the kids would flip through it and pick something to write about, and it was just very educational. And I think nowadays, you know, they don't watch the news. They don't go on their, you know, to see the news on their phones. So, it was a really useful tool. So, thank you.
That's why we also have the editions.
Yeah, that's how I get it. Yeah. I, I remember once, years ago, my daughter, my daughter told me she got all her news from the Weather Channel. I'm sure that's changed now, but I'm like, really? Okay, let's come down and take a photo.
Is somebody ready to get over here? Is that a comic?
There you go.
She might.
We're trained. We're trained on where we stand.
I suppose Jack's not here this morning. All right, thank you, and thank you for coming. Okay. What's RS2, I guess?
Resolution number 25129, a resolution by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, declaring the month of March as Irish-American Heritage Month in Pasco County.
I guess it's not our procurement, but I think it's supposed to be our procurement.
Procure, well, I'm going by the numbers on the resolution.
That's okay. Is there someone here for the Irish?
I've got it. I've got it. I'm just going by the resolution number.
It's Irish Procurement Day.
Well, what, to tell you what, since you're halfway back down, resolution number 25131, a resolution by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, declaring the month of March as National Procurement Month in Pasco County. Whereas, the public procurement profession plays a significant role in the efficiency and effectiveness of both government and business. And whereas, in addition to the purchase of goods, services, procurement adds value to the organization by performing functions such as executing, implementing, and administering contracts, developing procurement strategies, and cultivating working relationships with suppliers and other departments within Pasco County. And whereas, public procurement professionals at the Pasco County Board of County Commissioners and in other public and private organizations have tremendous influence on economic conditions in the United States with billions of dollars of accumulative purchasing power. And whereas, the Purchasing Department at the Pasco County Board of County Commissioners is committed to providing high-caliber strategic, logistical, and operational support of all departments within Pasco County. And whereas, in 2024, the Purchasing Department at the Pasco County Board of County Commissioners received the Achievement of Excellence in Procurement Award from the National Procurement Institute and the Award for Excellence in Public Procurement from the Florida Association of Public Procurement Officials. And whereas, the Purchasing Department at the Pasco County Board of County Commissioners recognizes, supports, and practices the public procurement values and guiding principles of accountability, ethics, impartiality, professionalism, service, and transparency established by the Institute for Public Procurement as fundamental tenets of the public purchasing profession. And whereas, the Institute for Public Procurement has proclaimed the month of March as National Procurement Month to further expand the awareness of procurement professionals' roles to government officials, the press, public, businesses, and corporate leaders. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, that said Board hereby declares the month of March as Public Procurement Month in Pasco County, and urges all Pasco County citizens to join in recognizing the role of the procurement profession within business, industry, and government. Done and resolved in regular session with a quorum president voting this 25th day of February 2025.
Move approval.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Mr. Oakley.
Oh, I'm, I'm not sure there's any Irish in this group, but...
Happy to hear that.
We cover that other one too, so. But no, thank you for the job that you do as a team and the leadership you give. So, it really means a lot to our citizens that we spend their money the proper way. And by saving money, you're doing it the right way. So, certainly appreciate all that you do and every item you go through to make sure it's done the right way. And our citizens, we take real care of our citizens' tax dollars and what it means to us. So, we're, we're the overseers of that. So, it's very, very important that you spend it the right way, so it can go further. So it's very, very important that you spend it the right way so it can go further than it may, may otherwise by choosing the wrong way to do it. But certainly appreciate each and every one of you for what you do. So, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Jaeger?
Well, I know firsthand that you guys try and keep, when you bid things out, the money in Pasco County. So that is great and I appreciate that. And I'm sure all of our citizens appreciate that and just everything you go through to make sure there's good quality, best pricing, you buy from Pasco County if possible. So thank you very much and great job.
Thank Chair. Woman. Yeah, you know, you guys, it's a tough job, tedious as tedious can be in striking the balance and being what's the most effective use for our taxpayer dollar. And then making sure that business you're working with has a, has a nice working experience with the county. That way they'll come back and we have competition for, you know, the work that needs to be done. So I understand that that's a tough day sometimes for all of you, but thank you for what you do and hanging tough and, and striking that balance. And Mr. Breitenbach, I guess, might want to follow up on that maybe?
I'm on the spot, wait.
Well, and I, I too want to thank you for your work and dedication to the citizens of Pasco County and the good work that you do. So do we all want to come down and take a photo?
Actually, I'd, I'd like to say something and maybe Carrie would like to say something too. I just, you know, again, I want to echo the sentiment of the board. You guys ensure, you know, accountability and fairness when it comes to expending public funds. And so, so it's appreciative. You know, as Commissioner Waitman kind of, you're probably not always the most popular people in the room sometimes. But I will say that with our core value of innovation, I've always found that through my time here at Pasco County, our, our procurement office has generally been pretty open-minded to try to find ways to streamline things too because efficiency is also, also part of the deal. And you guys do a very good job of, of helping us weave and, and color within the lines. And so, and, and that, that I, it's truly appreciated. I know you guys have got a lot of certifications and have won a lot of awards. And so we're just happy to have you on this team. And so thank you, Carrie. Thank you, Kim, and the team here for what you guys do every day.
And yes, thank you so much from the team, myself. We appreciate all the support. And to Commissioner Jaeger's point, local is very important to us. We're actually holding our second annual How to Do Business with Pasco County event next Monday to educate the local vendors on how to work with us. So we're expecting a very large crowd there and.
And where do you, where do you hold that?
That's at the Wesley Chapel Recreation Complex from 2:00 to 4:00 on Monday.
Okay.
And the banner is on our website. If people need more information, they can find it there.
Okay, well, I'll make sure we send that out in my newsletters.
Wonderful, yes ma'am. And we can provide you with the flyer if you'd like.
I'm Chair, if you would. Y'all stand up here, there's quite a few of them.
Okay.
We'd probably get a better picture.
We'll stay here and they'll come down.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Okay, RS3. One of them we're doing it, yeah, we'll do this one now. Yeah. And Jack's not here, so I will hand this one out unless we have an Irish member sitting up here. Oakley, are you Irish? Is that English? What's your heritage?
Do what now?
What's your heritage? Are you, are you?
It's 23 and me right now, so.
Okay. I'll do it.
Now, Resolution number 25129, a resolution by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida declaring the month of March as Irish-American Heritage Month in Pasco County. Whereas by 1776, nearly 300,000 Irish nationals had immigrated to the American colonies and played a critical role in America's war for independence. And five signers of the Declaration of Independence were of Irish descent. Three signers were Irish-born. And 23 presidents have proudly proclaimed their Irish-American heritage. And whereas the Irish first, first came to Spanish La Florida in the 1500s, first as missionaries and mercenary soldiers, and then as planters, traders, businessmen, doctors, and administrators. And three of the Spanish governors of La Florida were Irish military officers and Irish-born priest. Father Richard Arthur was appointed parish priest for St. Augustine in 1597. And a classical judge of La Florida and established the first public school in America and opened it to boys and girls of all races. And whereas Irish-born Commodore John Barry fought the last battle of the American Revolution off the coast of Florida and was recognized by the United States Congress in September of 2002 as the first flag officer of the United States Navy. And whereas in 1792, Irish-born James Hoban provided the architectural plans for the White House and served as one of the supervising architects for the construction of the Capitol. And whereas in 1813, Captain Oliver Perry, an Irish-American, received a major naval victory in the Battle of Lake Erie. And whereas future President Andrew Jackson, whose family came from County Antrim, served as Florida's military governor following its acquisition by the United States. And whereas in 1942, the five Sullivan brothers made the ultimate, ultimate sacrifice for democracy and freedom during the Naval Battle of Guadalcanal and later had the destroyer USS The Sullivan's commissioned in their memory. And whereas Irish-Americans, since the America's inception, have provided and continue to provide leadership and service to this nation's political, business, and religious establishments. And it is fitting and proper to celebrate the rich cultural heritage and the many valuable contributions of Irish-Americans. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, that said board hereby declares the month of March as Irish-American Heritage Month in recognition of the long history of Irish-American contributions to the state of Florida and Pasco County. Done and resolved in regular session with a quorum president voting this 25th day of February 2025.
Move approval?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Is there anyone here?
Where's J.J. Murphy?
Is there anyone here to accept this one?
Chief, Irish, big part of the fire department, I don't know.
Well.
Gilts and bagpipes and all. Yeah.
All Irish people, stand up. We got one. Stand up, hey! Come on, come on.
Come on down together, fellas.
Come on down.
I mean.
You know, I think this is the first time that we've done this. I don't remember ever hearing this. Okay, how are you Irish? Tell us.
My last name was Garby.
Yeah.
Okay, there you go.
My grandfather's side.
On your grandfather's side? Kathy, you too?
My, um, my grandmother was born in Ireland and my grandfather was born in Sweden.
Oh, wow.
Scotland, sorry, Scotland.
Scotland, Scotland. Well, I, I just think this, this has so many interesting facts in here, it's crazy. And I, you know, I, I think that when, when these five Sullivan brothers died, they made a rule after that, right? That you couldn't have family all serving like that. But gosh, that, that was very interesting. I don't know who asked us to sponsor this. Commissioner Mariano isn't here, but one of y'all, you know, you want to say anything?
Kathy just did.
Yeah.
I, I think honestly, if we did, uh, if we did genealogy, we probably would all be included in, in every group that's out here right now. So just, you know, recognition of one great part of, of all who we are, so.
Yeah, one big melting pot.
One big melting pot.
Yeah.
Yes ma'am, we're just a big mix, so.
Good, good timing, since March is coming too.
Yeah, I guess that's why we did this.
Yep, St. Patrick's Day.
Yeah. All right, so I guess we, we won't take a picture, we'll just hand this back to Jack. He probably is supposed to give it to someone. But thank you all for sharing your Irish heritage with us. And now we will move on to the consent agenda, I believe. Is that correct?
Well, that was different.
Yeah. Jack can look back on that, on that sometime and, okay. So we have a poll sheet, I'm going to look for it. There it is. Okay, we have one pulled off, Commissioner Waitman, C7. Wow. So anything else coming off the consent agenda today? Okay, seeing nothing, I'll take a motion for, to approve the consent agenda minus C7?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All right. Commissioner Waitman, C7.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You should have known this was coming. Commissioner Jaeger wasn't here, I don't know if she, if you've been briefed on the history. So the county receives surplus properties through tax deeds and whatnot. And sometimes the county invests taxpayer funds in them and all sorts, so there's a, there's an expense. And principally and philosophically, I disagree, we were selling them for a dollar. I'm glad to see it's for sale for $10 today, a property for sale for $10 versus fair market value to the taxpayer. Even at fair market value with, or whatever the reimbursement back to the county is to make the county taxpayer whole is, is what I still think it should be. And, you know, I don't mind selling these properties at all sell rate, but this rate is just not justifiable in my mind. And so I won't be supporting it, staying consistent with my arguments in the past. And, you know, so that's just, that's the reason why I pulled it. Selling property, taxpayer assets for a dollar or $10 is wrong, in my opinion.
Thank you. Okay, you want to explain the process and the property, please?
Yes ma'am, yes board. So this, consistent with the decision that the board made a little over a year ago, we were proposing to, after much discussion with individual board members, we were proposing a $1,000 minimum. The board ultimately decided in a 3-2 vote to reduce that to a nominal fee. As we worked with the county attorney's office, that nominal fee ultimately was turned into a $10 transaction.
Let him, let him give his presentation.
So this Colfax Drive location is sheeded to the county. And there, just so you can get perspective of where this is, that's State Road 52 and US 19 are the two main thoroughfares there. You can see the conditions from 2011 to 2024. It's been an overgrown lot. This is the lot, or this is the parcel. It consists of two lots, 50 by 127 in size. No taxes were paid on the, on this parcel since 2006, which has resulted in $25,000 plus in lost revenue to the county, just based on the vacant land taxation rates. If it was developed, could be even more. It is sheeded to the county in 2018. And a sheetment is a legal process where no taxes are paid. It goes through a legal process at the clerk's office and then is ultimately presented initially by the clerk's office for public sale.
Right.
No one bids on it. And if no one bids on it, then it is sheets, it reverts back to the county. So we then become the custodian of this property. What we have also looked at, the current appraised value is $26,993, and that's for the vacant land according to the property appraiser. Again, this is one parcel, it's 100 by 27, 100 feet by 127 feet, but actually two lots. And so the county expenses from 2009, due to code violations, property cleanups, and other activities, there was an old shed that was on the property that was demolished just to remove blight and other, other concerns in the neighborhood, $4,125.97. So as you can see, almost $30,000 of expenses, either direct expenses or lost revenue.
Lost revenue, yeah.
Have occurred at this property. So what does the future look like for this property? Well, community development, when we, when this property became aware that the county wanted to dispose of this property, we go through our property, our, our surplus and disposition notification. Community development identified this as a potential reuse for a community development housing project. Tampa Bay Neighborhood Housing Services was, was one of the organizations that community development partnered with to look at this property. And as they really dug into it, they could build two approximately 1,600 square foot houses, three-bedroom, two-bath, one-car garage houses on this property. The estimated value of those new homes will be somewhere in the neighborhood of $150,000 to $250,000. This then would be considered approximately $1,500 to $2,500 in taxable value per year per house. So what we've done is take a loss that we were looking at annually of about $1,500 a year and turn that into revenue generation of approximately $4,000 a year, give or take, going forward by partnering with this and disposing of this and allowing Tampa Bay Neighborhood Housing Services to build these, of these homes for Pasco County residents. There are reversionary clause, as we've discussed in the previous, within three years, construction must take place or it reverts back to the county's ownership. And then once the Tampa Bay Neighborhood Housing Services builds these homes, they will be given to Pasco, Pasco residents who have been Pasco residents for at least three years.
They're not given to them, they, they.
Yeah, they'll, yeah, they'll, they'll be into the program, yes.
With the low, low income, low mortgage and their age, there's affordability restrictions.
Here's an idea of what that, similar type homes that this organization has completed in the past. You can see a small, three-bedroom, two-bath house, you know, that can be.
No landscaping, we'll have to, well, in the front.
Again, this is, this is from another location, so, you know, they'll have to meet our codes and our standards in this county. But this is like, just to give you a flavor of what we're talking about doing for this project here. So that is the, and it is consistent with our, with our stated, not only state statute, but also our county surplus policies and procedures.
Okay. So does anyone besides me have some comments? Cause.
I mean, I'm, I'm for selling the property at, you know, for $10 if it's going to a nonprofit. You know, we lean on those nonprofits, the county does, we partner with them. So I think, you know, that's our way of, you know, help giving them support, so.
And these, these lots, I have quite a few now in my district, they sit vacant and then people start living on them and trashing them and dumping on them. And so one, we get these lots, you know, back into a good use and stops all that transient activity. But it also starts lifting up neighborhoods when they get new homes on it, increases the value around it, increases the, the investment that other homeowners might make. So, you know, we don't get very many of these, but when we do, I'm very much in support of getting them back out into these community builders and, and back having income, coming back into the county.
Yeah, and one other thing, I, it's important too that this is homeownership. We're not having, you know, a rental property in there where people can trash it, you know? Yeah, I'm all for it.
Commissioner Oakley? Okay, well, we need a motion then to approve C7?
Motion to approve C7?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay. All right, thank you very much. So, gosh, ripping right through. We are at. So we're going to take, we're going to take one of our Rs up in the afternoon since Commissioner Mariano is at the PHSC. So we will take up the confirmation of Code Compliance Director.
Good morning Chair, Board Members. David Allen, Assistant County Administrator for Development Services. I'm pleased to introduce our recommendation for our new Code Compliance Director, Ms. Denise Sanderson. She has over 15 years of leadership in local government, most recently at the city of St. Pete Beach, where she was a community development, interim community development director. And then prior to that, about 13 years of experience with the city of Clearwater. She started her career in the Florida area, working with Pasco County Economic Development. And she is really excited to continue to contribute to the community. And she is really excited to continue to contribute to the community. And I believe that she would be a fantastic fit for our team, particularly because her values align with ours in supporting the mission and vision in the direction that we want to go in Pasco County. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Ms. Sanderson to provide just a couple of brief words. And then following that, I would recommend that her approval of confirmation as a code compliance director. Thank you.
Thank you, David.
Good morning, Denise.
Good morning. How are you?
I'm good, good. Welcome, welcome back.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's a pleasure to be back. I've, as David said, I've spent many years in Pinellas County and it's good to be home. This has always felt like home. I grew up on a dairy farm in upstate New York and this community really resonates with me. It's certainly changed a lot since I last worked here. But my time at Pasco EDC gave me a great opportunity to get to know the community as it was then. And so I'm very much looking forward to working in the community, working with all of you, working with the team. I had the opportunity to meet some of them this morning and I'm, I'm excited to get going. So thank you very much.
Well, um, you have a, a big job ahead of you. And, uh, I, I am, uh, a big user of the code enforcement opportunities. So I know we'll be working well together. Already have a list for you.
What she's doing now is giving you a warning.
I don't believe I have an email address just yet, but... I'm so sorry, Commissioner.
I said, what she's giving you now is a warning of where you're gonna get some calls from. But no, we glad, we're glad to have you come into Pasco County and be a part of the code and do the job we know you know what to do. So very, look very forward for you starting and, um, coming a part of our employee family, so.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Denise, if I remember, when you went to Clearwater, one of the things you were doing was put, you put in those mid-block crossings and those refuge, isn't that right, along the Gulf Bowl? Didn't you work on those?
I did not, no.
What's that?
I, when I went to Pasco County, it was to lead their economic development effort, implement economic development strategic plan and, and was promoted, um, in 2016 to lead the, uh, within that department to be director overseeing affordable housing, community development. And so I have a great deal of experience working with homelessness. I led the city's homeless initiative for eight years in that organization. And so I have a great deal of experience. I understand the conflicts that arise with, with sprawl and growth. And so I'm looking forward to working with, um, not only with my team, but across the entire organization to address problems that we see in our communities from time to time and, and those that also are sustained over time that need to be addressed.
Awesome. I think you're gonna be a great fit for us. So I look forward to working with you.
Thanks very much.
And so we're gonna need a motion. Yes?
To make a motion to approve?
I'll second it.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Wonderful, welcome Denise.
Thank you very much.
Welcome aboard.
Okay, I guess we are on to Commissioner items then?
Twenty-eight.
Uh, twenty-eight, we got one more? Oh, another.
Another confirmation. Good morning. Kathy Pearson, Assistant County Administrator, Public Services. Before I introduce Mr. Chuck Lane, I just want to publicly thank Marcy Esberg for our current community development director and the many years and her team has done some amazing projects throughout this county. And as you all know, she's moving on to move with the team that's gonna be doing the new community development DR program under county administration. So Marcy, thank you. I'm pleased to announce that we have a fellow Bostonian too. Just wanted to let you know that was part of his agreement. So Mr. Chuck Lane, or Charles Lane, he is currently working for Pasco County. He was the project manager under Public Works. And prior to that, him and Denise were number one and two in the city of Clearwater for eight years. So Denise being the director and Chuck being the assistant director. So I think we hit the goldmine between the two of them because I think they're gonna bring some fantastic ideas. And I couldn't be more excited about having them both join Pasco County. And with that, I'll let Chuck say a few words and hopefully with due respect, that we respectfully ask you to confirm him.
Thank you, Kathy. I'd like to congratulate you on a great hire and my good friend Denise Sanderson. She was fantastic. And I'd also like to extend my congratulations to Marcy. She's done a great job in this organization. Built a great team. I've met the whole team. I'm looking forward to working with them. I understand community development and housing issues very well. I'm looking forward to unwrapping my sleeves, working with that team and, and bring some, uh, some help to our Pasco County residents. Happy to take any questions you might have for me.
I don't know if you noticed Swift Mud in his resume there. What, uh, since we have some former governing board members and I was on the PA Basin Board, what was your experience at Swift Mud?
I worked for Fritz Musselman in the Land Resources Department. Eric Sutton, I remember you very well, Mr. Oakley, as Chair.
I remember Fritz and Eric. Well, uh, we're very excited that you are joining us also. What a, what a great resume that you have as well. I think these are two really good hires for the county. I echo what you've all said about Marcy. But thankfully, we haven't lost Marcy. She's just gonna have another exciting challenge for the next few years. So, um, uh, good job, county administrator, on some great hires and...
You've done amazing work.
Yeah. And I would entertain some motions.
Well, uh, I would say, Chuck, that you were very right when you said Marcy had done a great job for the county and she has. And with that, I mean, uh, looking forward to what you're gonna do for us. We're, it's hard to improve when, when you got the best you're replacing, but we'd look for you to improve that, so.
Yes, sir.
But very proud that you're here with us and make the motion that we accept you in this position.
Thank you, Chair.
I need a second.
I'll second it.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay, welcome. All right, so we will do our 29 in the afternoon. And we will move on to Commissioner items with Commissioner Oakley.
I thought we were done.
Do you have any, um, and you might...
So the, we went out to, um...
Oh, nice.
To the public, public schools. And the picture you see there is at the Academy at the Farm, their, their high school construction. And this was the, what you call the, I guess it's the topping out of, of this, this building. And we there had a nice barbecue lunch and got to visit with everyone, but very nice. It'll actually, uh, next year, when it's done, it will, um, house the first ninth grade of, of Academy at the Farm High School. And then each year thereafter, it will add a class and it'll hold, um, four classes, ninth, ninth, tenth, eleventh, and twelfth, uh, in the future. And it's already built to, to house the four grades, so. But very good day and very, very important that we, uh, celebrate these, so. Uh, let's see. Uh, I believe, oh, and this is the, um, it seemed like there's more and more schools coming in. This is the Academy in Land Lakes. Very nice project, a project that holds, um, I think it's pre-kindergarten right on up to, uh, 12 years old, I believe the kids are. But you know, more and more businesses we build in Pasco County, the more and more there's a need for families to have a place to take their kids to and go to school that's not right in the busy part of the world, but yet close to where their jobs are. So this one's in our county, in the Land Lakes area. Very nice school, very, look forward to, uh, it coming up very quickly, so. And let's see what else we got. All right.
Is there anything from Tampa Bay Water?
No, it was, it was a fairly quiet meeting yesterday. We, uh, we got out actually around 11 o'clock, so, which is a very short meeting for Tampa Bay Water. So most time it's, you're at least noon getting out of there. But everything seemed to be in order and, uh, looking forward to things coming in the future with Tampa Bay Water and, and what we do to protect ourselves against having no water. We have plenty of water. And we got projects coming in the future that will add to that. The thoughts of maybe a reservoir in the future, I think another reservoir. And then actually, um, there's a possibility of, uh, D-Sow going to brackish water wells near, near the coast. That'll make D-Sow water cheaper, uh, than it is today. And it's, it's easier to clean because the brackish well, there's no trash and all in. It's just salt. And it'll be cheaper water to make it out of these, these wells that'll come in D-Sow, rather than bringing all the trash in. We had to have, uh, cleaning of, of that water before we could treat it and take the salt out, so. Which was very costly and in the future, that won't happen. The fact of it is, is, uh, things are, are recovering pretty well after the storms and, uh, they, they've really done a good job in protecting our water supply as we went through all the storms, so.
So how much longer does, uh, the Howard Kern get to dump into the, to the bay? That's gotta be ending here pretty soon.
You're talking about, well, I think it's two or three years, I believe, before it ends. I've actually welcomed the, the thought of maybe some of that reclaimed water coming to Pasco County 'cause, uh, every four houses that we build only, it'll produce only reclaimed water for watering the yards for only one house out of four. So it's, it's very well, um...
But who's gonna pay for the pipe to pump up here?
We can't, we can't get enough reclaimed water to, to cover all the houses that won't reclaim water. We're having that issue right now, so. And that, David Adams is aware of all this and, so. Anything you want to add?
Yeah, uh, Chair Starkey, the, they have until 2032 under the SB 64 requirements to stop the, or terminate discharge to the bay, Tampa Bay.
Okay, so they still have them.
But I've opened the door several times of asking them, uh, if they could get a way to send it to Pasco. We could use that water for different citizens' homes.
Yeah.
And there's a need, every time we turn around, there's somebody upset about the fact they can't get enough reclaimed water to water their yards. But with that, we, we got, I don't know how many, much rain we got here yesterday, but it was very needed and it was a very good rain. It actually probably most of soaked in, didn't run off like, like a lot of rain, so.
And you have the fair coming up?
No, we had a fair ending.
Oh, it ended?
Ended on Sunday.
Oh, wow, that was fast.
Very good fair, very well attended. Some of the guys told me that Wilton won't let me buy pigs for them anymore since I bought too many. So, but, uh, he was okay last night, but he hadn't seen the bill yet, so. He wa, he wasn't available. He had forgot to check that week off his calendar and he was away. He couldn't be there, so. He gave me the task of buying for him, so. But ever since I, I mean, I left, I left the building during two purchases that he and I both bought and I wasn't even in the building and, and he and I were part of the buying of those.
Are these pigs to eat or pigs to raise?
They could be eat, they could be eaten or they're given back. Actually, they had a new program at the fair where we give it back to, uh, Florida for Feeding Florida. And a very good program, a lot of pigs were donated back just for feeding Florida. So that, that made it go to use for people of need.
Yeah.
And, and, and they did that also with a steer. Steer sale also.
Yeah.
So it's the first time I, I bought a steer from a long time ago. First time I bought one having it cut and wrapped, but, um...
My father-in-law always bought one.
It was, um, I got to see the sheet on the, uh, grade of the animal, which is choice, and thought that'd be a good animal to buy to put in the freezer, so. Yeah, and Rachel Mendel, Rachel Mendelson, we all know Rachel Mendelson. I know, I know Kathy does. But she had a very good project. She, uh, did very good in it. And I asked her if she would eat steaks from Johnny Cash. She named it Johnny Cash this year. She told me she would, so I'm waiting to see. I'm not sure that'll happen, but that's all I have.
And you, um, we also had the kumquat festival, right?
Well, that's...
That was several weeks ago.
Yeah.
That's several weeks ago, but it went, as far as I know, it went very well also, so.
Well, um, I, I'll, I'll tell you this, and I'll do it now instead of, during my TDC update. You know, Saddlebrook sits on the Tourism Council. And, um, he had never heard of the co, the new general manager.
Right.
I, I don't remember his title. Uh, had never heard of the kumquat pie. And so we, um, we have suggested to him, I'm gonna call Mr. Goody, that, and they're gonna jump on it, that they're gonna serve that kumquat pie to events in, at Saddlebrook. So, um, it's very unique to this area and so it's something they can easily put on their menu there. So I thought, what a good relationship between the kumquat growers in Dade City and Saddlebrook.
Yeah.
Right?
Be good.
Okay, Commissioner Waiton?
Well, Commissioner Oakley was insinuating, he makes one heck of a beef tenderloin. And so he'll be hosting a luncheon at the office here, once that cow's wrapped, right? Have to get that steer.
You know, my hearing aid just, I think the battery just came out.
So, uh, kicked off today, want to congratulate Dr. Chesee Peizers, PHSC. He had his investiger.
Yeah.
Uh, so he's the fifth president of PHSC here in Pasco and Hernando Counties. And, um, PHSC's growing with our county and they're just such an integral part of our DNA. I just wanted to recognize them this morning and congratulations to Dr. Peizer and, and his staff and, and the, and the college. Next. So last week we had, so cricket's growing in Pasco County and we had the Fourth Annual President's Cup, uh, Wesley Chapel District Park, which they historically host the event. It's growing every year. And this year, we had, uh, seven teams, one from Connecticut, Cleveland, New Jersey, Arkansas, South Carolina, North Carolina. And then we had, uh, the Orlando Stars and the Tampa Tigers come in and play over the weekend. And so as they're growing, you know, obviously, um, Keith and his team are trying to manage all the diversity of sport that's come here to the sports coast. And, uh, these guys are eager and it's just a growing, unique sport within the Pasco County and greater Tampa Bay community. Very much like crick, like, um, pickleball, you know, they have their, their own worlds and their demands. And so it's an interesting bunch of folks that come and travel and, and stay here. So congratulations to those guys and look forward to, to next year.
It looks like that was a beautiful day.
Uh, it was Chamber of Commerce Day.
Look at that sky.
It was a nice day.
In short sleeves.
Yeah. Cool, but, but not, not, not that cool. Next up, so we had, um...
A wait.
Yeah, here we go.
Hitting the, uh...
They gave me a kid's bat. You know, that thing can double, you know, like the old school, school days. Those cricket, those cricket bats have, could have multiple uses on them.
Yeah, but look at our field. It's, looks like it's getting a little overused.
Well, that's, they are overused.
That's not good right there.
Gotta look at some maintenance for our rinks, since you brought it up.
Wow. That is not good. There's no good, what, is that a soccer field?
It's a, yeah, it's multi-use field.
Where's the grass?
It's all around. As you can tell, that's where soccer starts. Soccer season's in full swing.
Not good there, okay.
All right, next. Okay, so then we have, so, uh, EDC, so the EDC has their, um, had our annual meeting and they're starting to kick off their list of events. And so the Grow Pasco events coming up, that'll be Thursday, March 20th at St. Leo. There'll be 15 sessions and some 30 different businesses that'll come to that event. And, um, so they're just, you know, getting the word out there and it's open and more businesses that come and network and spend the day getting to know one another.
There was something else I forgot, but we had, I believe we had the, uh, Employee Appreciation Day.
Yes.
Two weeks ago?
Yep, I wasn't here for that, yeah.
But it went very well, very well.
Always out of town on that.
I think we fixed, I believe, for 3,000 people, I believe. And I don't know the exact number on that, but it had 700 meals they packed in, in boxes and sent out. So it was very well attended.
Where did you do it? Was that Cruz Lake?
Wesley Chapel Park, District Park.
Oh.
It, it worked, uh, very well in Wesley Chapel Park. Actually, I, it was my park for a while until y'all got more people in your districts and so they divided up and took a little of my land away from us, so.
You're still the largest.
I am still the largest, so, don't forget it.
And then, and then we had our transportation meeting, but I guess if Chair Starky, you wanna talk about it, but it was a nice kinda conversation, uh, when you look at regionalism and transportation with the 54 and 41, uh, potential improvements that are coming on the pipeline, but I'll wait and we can, Commissioner Starky.
Yeah, we can jump into it now.
Can, can share it. So they're looking, so the, the, the one flaw, and it was nice to have perspective from Witt, from Pinellas, who's their planning director and their MPO guy and others, in the one piece, that was discussed and it was a great point, having other commissioners from the counties. So when the intersection is gonna be whatever it's gonna be, if it's a fly...
Fifty-four, forty-one.
If it's a flyover of 54 over 41, the pedestrian portion of the project, there's, I don't, I couldn't understand if there wasn't enough right-of-way. There's, there's not one, and so there's gotta be a way to at least get the most basic level of foot traffic across, cause there's train there and everything else. And I personally think that if there's a pedestrian pro- component to the project, it's gotta be on the south side, because a great point was raised, if you're coming out of the shopping plaza or any of the shopping plaza, uh, like where Big Lots is and whatnot and the gas station at 54 and 41 on the northeast side, drivers aren't paying attention to pedestrians. They're looking, their eyes are focused on finding the gap in traffic and jumping out in the road to get to where they're gonna go across four, six lanes, whatever it is. And so that was a really good point that was made. So based on that point, we, we kind of collectively agreed, I understood it, that having pedestrian opportunities on both sides of that intersection were probably not the best move, uh, design of it because of the commercial opportunities on the north side of the road, cause when you're coming down, you have Wendy's and you have, you know, other places, you have the Beef's and the other plaza, just where Benedetto's used to be. So I've, I'm kinda thinking that the board's leaning, if we figure out, I guess working with DOT on how to get some level of, of sidewalk.
We need an overpass, we need a pass.
Uh, on, on the south side, but you know, I'll let commi- digress to Commissioner Starky on her, her opinions on it. But it was a great dialogue and appreciated the other folks there from other parts of the world, really taking a look at it, um, and understanding the need for that intersection and the improvements that need to come. That way we can give people some more time in their life and not stuck behind the steering wheel.
I, I just think that they should be planning a pedestrian, um, or cycling component or multimodal, whatever, over 41 as well as the cars, number one. Number two, they did, the, the, um, you know, there's a four-lane, I think it's two lanes in either direction, but there's, there's no, uh, space if we ever add some kind of transit, um, to go over, so I think that's short-sighted as well. So even if it's just a 10, 12-foot blank median in between the two lanes, we should go ahead and account for something in the future, because a county that's growing as fast, and we went over the numbers there, um, in the area, a county that's growing as fast as ours and only having two east-west roads, I guess we could kinda count half a county line road, maybe one day we'll start counting that one as well, but we're gonna need, you know, it's not for us, it's in the future, um, we're gonna need some transit options and we shouldn't be building that overpass and not taking something more growth, in my opinion, into account, so.
Yeah, that overpass is gonna be, I mean, there's no red lights anymore, so if you're going east and west, you're just rolling right, right over it. So there's no traffic-stopping mechanisms for people. So if they're wanting to figure out how the way to cross north and south, they're gonna be taking their lives into their own hands, or, if they get anywhere near there, so. Just a piece for us to think about, um, but I, I, I think it's time to make a decision that my statement of done is better than perfect. We've been trying, how long y'all been, we've been working on this, this thing?
That's the problem. They have $33 million, right, 30, 30, or 22, 22, 30 million dollars, uh, of $200 million worth of acquisitions, so we, we just have to board with supporting letters, uh, but we're gonna need, we're gonna need Fed help on that one to el- to bring it sooner rather than later. And, um, it is part of the SIS system, so it's part of the evacuation route for the Tampa Bay area and the number one priority when you look at our pro- the regional priorities for an improvement. And, um, it's pretty sad, it's the number one priority and there's no funding, so. Yeah, so thanks for bringing that up, yeah. And I, I think we continue to, um, have regional support for the mer- the MPO merger discussion. We, um, did not have a Hillsborough Commissioner present at the meeting, um, but, uh, the Hillsborough County TPO voted in favor of continuing and moving towards a regional solution, overriding some views of the Hillsborough and Tampa City Council positions. We'll say it like that. Okay, Commissioner Jaeger.
Okay. Okay, so we visited the Volunteer Way, that was...
Isn't that amazing?
It's amazing, so, um, the gentleman in the bottom picture is Lester. He founded the Volunteer Way, so those are all of his plants out there. So they have banana trees, they have, you, you name it, they have every fruit and vegetable out there that they grow, um, their chickens with their fresh eggs. When we were there, people were shopping and picking their, um, their fresh fruits and vegetables, and they feed about 23 families a month, which is absolutely amazing.
I think it's more than that. Twenty-three families?
No, 23,000.
Okay, you said 23, yes.
Oh, yeah, no, 23,000. And, um, they have their, their, um, other location off of Moon Lake and they are looking to expand there. So, next slide, please.
Commissioner Jaeger, do you know on their Moon Lake, um, at their Moon Lake site, do they also grow, do they have a farm? They, we need, we need them to do more farms. We gotta figure that out.
Oh, it was amazing.
Yeah.
So beautiful, it's so relaxing.
They're doing such a great job with that.
They have the fire pit out there, cause it was chilly. So this was a really, um, this was the Warrior Award presentation and so Captain Schrader, Christmas Eve, this mom walked into the fire station with her children and she was in a very dangerous situation and she went to the fire station and she did not even have car seats to transport her children, so, um, Captain Schrader organized this along with his, his team, was amazing, and they got car seats for the mom and they also provided, uh, an entire Christmas for her. So that was just, in a, he went over, above and beyond, but due, thanks to him, um, they are safe and they had a Christmas and, um, it was just very sad that they were in a scary situation. So it was an honor to be there and the helmet is really cool. All right, next slide. Okay, so throughout the month of February, our office did Random Acts of Love, so we popped up places and people didn't know when we were coming, so, um, we did a pop-up pantry in Moon Lake, so that's always great. We feed anywhere from 100 to 250 families when we go out there. So next slide. And this was our Random Acts of Love, this was at the fire station. They did not know we were coming, which was really cool, so our theme was "Let's Taco" about how amazing you are. So, um, they enjoyed that and, um, I got a tour and, um, it was really interesting. I encourage all of you, you know, go visit the different fire stations. This particular fire station, um, at shift change, they have 18 firefighters there, but they only have two bathrooms, so, and the showers are with the bathroom, so if somebody's showering, so just, you know, when we think of their needs and things like that, that, that stood out to me, but, um, they have three bays there, they have the tool truck, so...
Which one is this one?
This one was 39.
Which is where?
I was there for like an hour and a half, it was, it was, it was really great, they were great.
And where is 39? I don't remember.
That was in Sunlake.
Sunlake, okay.
Yep, all right, next slide. And this was, um, our seniors' center, they did not know we were coming, so we decorated the tables, we brought prizes and goodies and we played bingo and, let me tell you, bingo's very serious, so, um, you have to make sure that you, uh, call those numbers properly. Um, all right, so they had a great time, they were all clapping when we left, so. Um, this was the sheriff's office, so we gave them breakfast sandwiches and I, I just requested a dog and they brought three dogs, so we brought dog treats for the, for the canines, so that was, that was the best part. All right, next slide. That's it? Okay, boy, that was it. All right, and for the area of aging, um, they had lost some funding, so they are trying to rally the delegation, you know, for Tallahassee to see if we can get some of that, um, funding back. They get roughly about 1,000 calls a week, so that is a lot of calls for their, for their small staff. They're small but super efficient. Um, they went over their Diapers for Dignity program where people can donate, um, items for the seniors and that has been working great, so if any of you have any items you wanna donate, let me know. And, um, that's all I have.
Thank you. Can you get a list out to what they're looking for?
Absolutely.
All right. All right, I think County Administrator?
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, just a couple of quick things. Item N-83 on your agenda, actually I'm formally withdrawing that.
Which one?
Uh, N-83, but it doesn't change what's been done, and I wanna take a second to explain what N-83 was about. It's, um, as, as part of the immigration, um, status here, uh, you know, in the state and in the country, uh, we had been waiting for quite some time to get, become 287G compliant, as it, as it's, as it's called. And basically what that does is allows us to cooperate with immigration officials. There's, there's two different flavors of it, but it had been sitting, uh, literally in the previous administration's offices for years when we took over the, uh, the Corrections Facility. Uh, so now, under new administration, there's a push at state level to, to have all of the jails within the state of Florida, uh, move towards this, so we jumped at the opportunity. I went ahead and executed an agreement. It'll be coming back to you as a consent item to ratify that decision. I, I don't think that there'll be any, any, um, negative discourse on, on, on doing that, but yes.
You can, you can get them to do a, approve, ratify and consent your signa- signatures on 83 and, right now and not have to bring it back.
Well, I would, I would certainly love that and, and I can have...
Once more in-depth about what it was, but, but...
Well, I can, I can...
You have, you have, you have executed the documents in, because of the time constraints, um, what we traditionally do is bring that back as in a, is to get the board to approve, ratify and confirm the administrator taking that action on your behalf.
And I, I just wanna add, if you guys don't know what 287G, that allows the, um, Sheriff's Office to go into the jails and re- and remove those, um, illegal.
I actually have Chief Jenkins, since we have a, a couple of minutes, if you'd like, I can have Chief Jenkins come up and explain real quick.
Chair, see, you, are you wanting to vote on this now so you can bring it back?
We can, or I can bring it back as a consent item.
I say we do it.
What's done is done, so, but if you wanna hear from the chief, that's certainly...
And you said N-87?
N-83, so what I would like is a, is a motion to ratify and affirm my execution of the agreement with, um, with immigration.
I would rather get it done now and not wait.
I'll second Commissioner Jaeger.
I'm online, I'm online and it stops at 84 on the agenda packet online, just, just wanna be sure where...
That's AC 84, it's N-83 for noted items.
Oh, N-83, okay, N-83. I thought someone said that, 87, okay.
Commissioner Jaeger, is that motion?
Yes, I, I make a motion for you to be allowed to do that.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, do you wanna speak?
I will, absolutely. Chief, uh, Chief Stacy Jenkins, Pasco Corrections. Just, uh, very, very briefly, um, back in 2017, the, the jail became a jail enforcement model under 287G, uh, which meant we had officers that were trained by, um, Department of Homeland Security, ICE, in a four-week class up in, I believe it was North Carolina. And those officers went through that training, we had a database placed within the county jail where we would interview any foreign national to determine, um, their, their immigration status. So we would conduct the interviews, we would actually initiate the detainers at that point in time. During the transit, transition from the Sheriff's Office to County Operations, initially we attempted to assume the same agreement by the County Administrator, um, the, the jail with immigration. Unfortunately, immigration came back and said we could not just reassign those duties at an entire new contract or agreement had to be in place. So that agreement has been sitting in Washington DC since, uh, Mr. Car- uh, Carbella, as the Assistant County Administrator, signed that back in August of 2022. Um, and it has been sitting in, in Washington. Currently, we are in the middle of, at the jail expansion to get the computer system in there along with the, uh, uh, really the manpower that it will take to, to operate this program. Uh, we decided to go with the Warrant Service Agreement, uh, program, which is compliant with the 287G. It's just an abbreviated program, uh, where we are accepting those detainers, we're not initiating them, but we're accepting them and providing all the same services and compliance of, with the governor's, uh, request and with, uh, DHS's request.
And the, um, folks that went up and got that training, are they still with us or do we need to send people up again?
So some people have, um, changed, um, through the, through the state and the Sheriff's Association. We provided a group of names this morning, uh, it's due by tomorrow, a group of officers that we can retrain, uh, that was provided along with all the waivers that they requested. It was provided this morning.
Okay. And just last question, we will be completely compliant by April 1st or did that, is, or is it gonna be sooner?
Um, it will likely be sooner. All the training has to be provided by DHS.
Okay.
Uh, so we're waiting for them to provide dates, uh, to send individuals to training. Uh, we are currently honoring all the detainers that come through, um, so the, the jail, when they get a detainer, we contact, uh, Mr. Hale with the County Attorney's Office, he reviews them and ensures that there's nothing missing within that detainer and then we, we do currently honor them. But we are not within a program, we don't have an MOU, which is required.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions?
Okay, thank you. You're welcome, thank you.
How's our jail coming, by the way?
We're, we're getting in there, the, uh, they're painting, um, in the, in the new building, um, so yeah, we're, we're excited to get in that, um, but there is a lot of remodeling to do in the, in the current space also.
Okay, Andrew's stepping up here.
Yeah, we can have Andrew give a, a one-minute update.
Yeah, give us a one-minute update, thanks.
Yeah, quick, quick one-minute update, Andrew Baxter, Facilities Management Director. Um, Phase 1 of the jail project, jail expansion project will be completed by, uh, the end of this summer, and so that is the major expansion that you see. Phase 2 will then be the connection and the renovation of a portion of the existing jail, and so that will be another about 18 months project once Phase 1 is completed. But that's where we're looking right now and things are really coming along in Phase 1. And getting close to, close to opening, so later this summer.
Any questions on the jail?
Got your spot picked?
All right, thank you, aye.
And, and testament to, to the chief and HR and our recruiting efforts, we are, we are adding corrections officers to our, uh, to our employee roster, so we should be in good position to staff it when it opens. Uh, the only other thing I wanted to mention, you may have noticed this coming in, uh, our Go Pasco team is, is outside. Kathy, I don't know if you wanna say a couple of words about what it is they're doing there.
Kathy Kirsten, Assistant County Ministry of Public Service, so Go Pasco is out taking surveys, so trying to catch as many of our citizens as we can to find out what we're lacking, what we can do better, and they got lots of goodies out there too, so. Anybody listening, they'll be there till noon time and they will again be at the Dade City, uh, where the County Commission meeting.
And I'm gonna put you on the spot and ask you a question, I understand if you don't have the numbers, but how are we looking at our Hope Pasco with our displaced residents?
So we just met last week with Mr. Carbella, we have a plan. We are about at 50, uh, people out there right now, only about...
Displaced or homeless?
Either the displaced.
So displaced, okay.
We have not transitioned to a different plan, but we will be meeting with you very soon with that plan. So, uh, right now, they're occupying, I think it was like 30-something units, about 50, 36? 36 units, about 50 folks, so.
And what about at the Family Show?
Youth Lane, they're pretty much full, so the family, um, at Youth Lane is pretty full.
Okay. Okay, all right, thank you.
That's all, ma'am, thank you.
Who, who do I go to next?
Me.
Okay, County Attorney.
I was gonna do N-83, but the Administrator has covered it, so thank you.
Well, uh, let me ask you something, I, like I said, I usually try and read the paper and I only heard it anecdotally, but are we getting some kind of Doge requirements? but are we getting some kind of DOGE requirements from our governor that we are going to need to respond to? What?
So I don't know if Ralph is here. I know the governor signed an executive order yesterday, which covered DOGE-type activities across the state, but to include sort of, the way I read it, was a desk talk audit of, of local governments. So of course, you know, we, you know, here in Pasco County, our, our Office of Performance Management has, for almost a decade, really been using private, private practice principles, such as Lean Six Sigma, in, in all of our departments to ensure not only, you know, not only cost efficiency, but, but really in terms of service delivery to our customers. Because I know we can talk about cost, and we talk about cost and efficiency as sort of being one and the same thing, but I also look at terms of, of value, and are we providing value to our citizens? And, and quite honestly, that, that group has operated for well over a decade. We have four or five Six Sigma Black Belts, a lot of green belts in the organization, a lot of yellow belts. It falls within our culture of innovation that, that we try to push here. But notwithstanding, you know, Ralph, maybe you can talk to the particulars of what the executive order had.
So as you mentioned, he had the press conference, and he, and he rolled out an executive order of what his, he envisions. Generally, he's created a new DOGE Task Force modeled after federal efforts to reduce government waste. He will eliminate over 70 boards and commissions deemed redundant and ineffective. He pushed to further reduce spending despite population growth and inflation. He continued focused on tax relief, including the elimination of Florida's unique tax on business rent. Efforts to read, to use artificial intelligence for auditing state contracts and eliminating ideological spending. Specifically for local government, local government spending, the governor stated that while Florida's state government has reduced spending, many local governments have increased their budgets and imposed higher property taxes. Homeowners are overburdened. Due to the rising property tax assessment, particularly affecting seniors or on fixed incomes, he suggested Florida could shift more tax burden to visitors and seasonal residents rather than relying on our permanent homeowners. Local government audits, DOGE Task Force will review county and municipal spending using public available records. The governor is requesting legislative power for the task force to enforce audits at the local level. That way, a bill would not have to be introduced. The way he envisions this, this would go last for over a year, March 26, I think it, it would go out. The task force would be done. Legislative action to improve local government transparency. He is pushing for laws that would force local governments to comply with audits by the State's Efficiency Task Force, so he would have to implement that this session. The task force would also use AI technology to detect wasteful spending. Local government spendings on DEI and other programs. The governor noted that at the state level, diversity, equity, and inclusion programs have been eliminated. May still be funding similar initiatives under different names at the local level, so he wants to do away with those. He emphasized that AI auditing tools will be used to flag contracts that continue DEI-related spending under new labels. Infrastructure and local services. The state has been accelerating infrastructure projects to keep it up, to keep up with the population growth and tourism, and he suggested that local governments need to be more efficient in their own infrastructure spending. So that's basically the gist of it. Our attorneys have the executive order, it's under one pager. It will be, now we have to see what bills are filed to, to give him that authority with the task force with a local level. We're also, you know, session opens up next week. We have several bills out there that have been filed, again, with lean away, local government. Couple of interesting ones dealing with our, our ad valorem, a study to do away with ad valorem. That was something the governor would like to see on the ballot in the next election.
Have we bonded our ad, ad, do we bond our ad?
Yes.
Well, that's, okay.
So just keep in mind, those are, those are-
I understand how we work.
But I think at the end of the day, you know, we'd be ready to comply with that. I think we do enough already, and we can be proud of where our county is. But I'm sure there are some other local governments that, that he's trying to target. But I think as we move forward, we should be fine.
So, you know, we, a number of years ago, voted to, or agreed to bring in the Auditor General's office over at the clerk, so we, this is kind of for some of our newer board members. They, not every county does that. But we, we chose to do that, and it's just for us, though. So not, I don't think they go into our constitutionals. But I would imagine that this look and ask for accountability is to all government agencies. And so just, at least we, we, you know, we, we can show we audit ourselves, I think. So we probably have some good data here with our office. And I'm, I'm sure our, our constitutionals will comply with that, coming down the pike. Okay. And we don't have a DEI program here, so we're, we're good there. Okay, it's you.
We have nothing directly from, from Clerk Alvarez Holes, but I would just comment that there's currently, all the constitutionals are currently audited in the comprehensive audit each and every year.
Yeah, but we-
And it's part of the comprehensive audit.
But I think we do, we go in much deeper than the others.
You have more, you have, the Auditor General has set up an annual plan to go in and do assisted for management reasons at the board level. But this is over and above the comprehensive audit that all constitutional officers go through in detail each and every year.
Yeah. That's, that's the equivalent of what we would call a typical financial audit. And so that's making sure that everything is accounted for appropriately. What, what we do at our level, I think Commissioner Starkey is, you know, we'll look at hotspots in the organization, we'll look at areas that, you know, can, you know, are we, are we adhering to our part, are we adhering to our own procedures and our own policies? And are those procedures and policies best practices and, and recognized? And so that's, that audit plan is developed every year in conjunction with our various departments and the clerk's office. We've had them come in, you know, we've, we've looked at our Building Services Group, we've, we've done stuff with utilities. So over the course of many years, it's, it's part of the culture of, of continuous improvement.
Yeah, I mean, I think when we find, you know, we're a big organization, we handle lots of money, lots of programs, and it's good to have a fresh set of eyes to make sure we're, we're doing everything right. And they've, we've found where we could do things better, and we fix those. So we, we appreciate that look, no doubt. Okay, is that it for you?
Yep.
Did you marry a bunch of people on Valentine's Day at the clerk's office?
We, I believe Nikki had 24, I believe 24 couples on the courthouse steps on Valentine's Day.
Very good. Okay, so now we're on to me. So we did our very first, Mr. Oakley left, but we did our very first Board of County Commissioners Farm Share in the Holiday area, and I want to thank all the staff that came out and helped distribute the food. And, and thank you to Farm Share for helping us. The next one is March, and it's in Commissioner Oakley's district. I don't have the date, and he's left, he's, I don't know if he's left for the day or stuff, but someone can get us a date for Commissioner Oakley's. We'll all get some notices.
I'm told it's February 19th, I'm sorry, March 19th.
March 19th, okay. I had my Harbor South Leadership Council meeting, and thanks for all the staff that attended. I don't, there we have some pictures, so Marcy, JP, of course, you know, we had a lot of flood and FEMA questions, and so we're, we're grateful that he was there, and we get a lot of really good feedback. A lot more people came in after we started, so we had quite a few communities represented there. I participated, participated again in Literacy Week, and I read to the VPK class in Trinity Elementary, so that was, that was pretty awesome. Those kids are, are really wonderful. I also attended the governor's lunch, Commissioner Oakley also attended at the fair. And, and there's our own Wilton Simpson sitting there, so great event, and were you there? Did you go? You?
No, ma'am.
No? Okay. Let's see what else. We had the Growing Global event, so we, thank you, Mr. Carbella, for coming. We held this on a freezing day. It affected our attendance, we had, half of our people who registered didn't show up. Our International Tourism and Economic Development Day at Starkey Market, and actually made some really good connections there. The head of Florida, for the Florida US Department of Commerce was there, and really, I'm going to be following up with him on a number of things. Speaking down here on the bottom left is, again, our Stevie, who is our county employee who went to Germany for three weeks. The, the, the money for the tickets for this event are going to help fund that program, and we have some raffle baskets that you're all going to get an email to participate if you'd like. I think that, I don't think I have the information on how much the tickets are, but they're very cheap, and the baskets are worth $450 to $800 a basket, so I think we have four baskets. And really, a shout-out to Lisa Perizzi for helping us get a lot of the items for those baskets, and my staff, they did a great job. Is there anything else I should say about that? So, and we are working on sending two more county employees over, and receiving two from Gemmerstein. This is the Starkey TLC Outdoor Adventures Expo at Starkey Cultural Center, and that gentleman speaking is an Army Ranger who was wounded in his tour duty. He's, and the woman speaking at the mic is from the Wildlife Corridor Foundation. We had a packed room, and they, they showed a film that they had made with three veterans who, who traversed part of the wildlife corridor. It was called, it's called O2O, so Cala National Forest to the Osceola National Forest, I think it was. And they biked and hiked and kayaked and rode horses, and, and just a beautiful film. I think you can get it, you can see it on YouTube. They won an award for this film, and it highlights part of the gap in the national, in the Florida Wildlife Corridor, so. I tell you, Lane Smith's doing a great job over there. And there are all kinds of lectures and things going on at, at the TLC that is amazing, that you should try and go look and see what's offered there. They have an event coming up with, with the gentleman who has the museum over here at Wendell Crin, it's sold out already, so I, I want to go tour with you and Kathy and Mike. Go tour his museum. He needs a much bigger space. This morning, we went and did the ribbon cutting at the Elfers Senior Center that opened again on December 9 of 2024. They, since, since we reopened, they've already served 1,300 meals in December, December. Let's see, what else?
Oh, and that gentleman cutting the ribbon, he used to go to high school there.
Yes, so instead of me cutting ribbon, I asked for him to cut the ribbon. He went to school there, back when, oh, interesting, I went and looked at the history of Elfers, and it was founded by a woman named Bailey, like Bailey's Bluff, and someone with the name of Ilan, E-I-L-A-N-D. So how old is that family in the county? Yeah, so, and here they were over, over here in Elfers. And Elfers was briefly incorporated in the 1920s, I think from 1920, 1930-something, so. And he was saying that they got federal money to build that, that school when they were an incorporated city, so it's interesting. The roads around it are falling apart, so we're going to look at that. And, okay, lastly, my TDC update. Our revenues are way up, and sadly, it's because so many people stayed in our hotels during the hurricane. So it's a, it's an anomaly, but we are up 67% from last year at this time. But we know, we know that that's not going to last. We did a fam tour with eight travel advisors that came in from the Northeast. We also had a fam, Kumquat fam tour, so we had some people writing about the Kumquat Festival. We had a very big hockey tournament. We had 34 hockey teams come in from around the country. And a reminder that the Tourism Banquet is May 22, 2025, at Saddle Brook. Our speaker is Tony Dungy, and I think that we are just about sold out. So if you don't have your tickets, you can buy, you can participate in our raffle. And, and our raffle from the Tourism, Tourism Council has two tickets to the, to the dinner at Saddle Brook. So with that, we are going to break, and we will be back after-
Not, not for nothing.
Yeah?
I love Tony Dungy, but if y'all could somehow recruit Chuck Norris, that could be a legendary, a legendary night, I'm just saying.
We had Titus, Titus O'Neil. Titus is a good guy.
Chuck, Chuck Norris, I think Chuck Norris-
Why, does he live around here?
I don't know where he lives, but he might be worth it. I mean, he's Chuck Norris.
Norris just makes tourism revenue, it just happens.
He does it, he, he brings it down. We can start, there you go, Mike.
You know, that's not the world I run around in, the one that Mr. Norris, you know. Is, is he a wrestler, what is he? What does he do?
Actor.
He's an actor, but wasn't he in a sport of some sort?
Exercise, black belt, you name it, I mean, Walker, Texas Ranger. I mean-
All right, well, we're going to stick you on that one, Seth. You get him here.
Worth a Google.
All right, word, Jerry.
... and other- Storm drains are meant for clean rainwater. Most other- If you suspect an illicit discharge, please contact Pasco County Department of Public Works at 727-834-3611. Here in Florida, we're no stranger to rain, and Pasco County Public Works wants to show you how we're working to improve drainage along your roads. Our crews work hard to keep your roads in great shape, and you'll notice, after a heavy rain, we often see ponding or standing water on the road that doesn't easily drain away. Ponding can be a problem for a couple reasons. Most importantly, it can be a safety issue, because when you drive through standing water, you can start to hydroplane and lose control. So why does ponding happen? In most cases, it's because the shoulder doesn't slope away from the road, so the water doesn't have anywhere else to go. Pasco crews are always on the lookout for these problem areas and have a relatively easy way to fix them. Most Pasco roads that have water ponding problems have a sod curb where the grass grows right up next to the road. Our crews use this machine, called a grater, to shave off about three feet of sod running along the road. This creates a slope, allowing water to run away from the road. Our crews also use a loader to scoop debris and a sweeper to clean the worksite. Then finishing touches are added, like new sod or stone to prevent the fresh soil from washing away. And just like that, ponding is gone, and your roads are protected. This easy, cost-effective fix doesn't alter the rights of way or affect your property in any way. Thanks for watching, and please visit mypasco.net to learn more about how Pasco is working for you.
Hi, I'm Hans with Pasco County Public Works. You'd be surprised with what ends up in our stormwater inlets. Besides the occasional gator, we find mattresses, bicycles, even shoes. How does it all get here? More on that later. First, it's time to clean up and clear out. Over time, stormwater inlets get clogged with sand, leaves, and grass clippings, natural things, but also cans, plastic bottles, and other trash. Our team clears all that debris so stormwater can drain properly. To better see what we're dealing with, our stormwater asset management team has a special camera on wheels. The camera goes where we can, checking stormwater pipes for anything that might block the water flow. The camera also helps us check the condition of the stormwater pipes to see if repairs are needed, and that's important, because Pasco has more than three hundred and forty-seven miles of stormwater pipes and more than seventeen thousand stormwater inlets. Once we analyze the video, the operation team shows up to blast water into the stormwater pipes and vacuum up any debris. Then we truck it all away. With clean stormwater pipes, cleaner water is now flowing into our ponds, rivers, and lakes, and some of that water eventually flows into the Gulf of Mexico. Clean stormwater inlets also prevent flooding, which means safer properties and less damage for everyone. So now you can see why dumping anything into a stormwater inlet or altering a stormwater structure is not only illegal but harmful. Don't dump grass clippings, fertilizer, chemicals, paint, basically anything that affects water quality and the environment. Pasco has a waste drop-off site in Spring Hill that's open every day except Sundays, so bring your household hazardous waste here instead. You'll avoid a hefty fine for dumping in the stormwater drains. We want to protect your family and your property from flooding, and we want to keep our natural resources as pollution-free as possible, and you can do your part, too. We hope you learned a little about how we're serving our community, and if you see a clogged storm drain, please let us know at mypasco.net or by calling seven-two-seven-eight-four-seven-two-four-one-one.
Sharon uses Pasco County public transportation just about every day she can.
It saves my life, actually, because I'm not a person to stay home.
She rides the bus system to go to the doctor, shopping, and even into Pinellas County.
I've had a couple of bus drivers say, "You get around."
PCPT continues to grow, expanding service with new buses and new routes.
West Pasco's a big town, Middle Pasco's rural, and East Pasco is small urban, which presents totally different transportation difficulties and challenges. But our drivers and the team overcome those challenges on a daily basis to make sure our customers get where they need to go on time and safely.
From professionals to retirees, PCPT buses are for everyone.
Sit there, use our free Wi-Fi, look at your phone, get some work done, call somebody, or just sit there and read a book, and leave the driving to us, because we'll get you where you need to go.
How you feeling?
Okay.
Good, I like your purse.
PCPT also provides special services for those who need a little extra help with the paratransit buses.
The service is good because it's reliable.
Alana Newman gets door-to-door service to Pasco's Senior Service Elderly Nutrition Program.
They just seem like they have a good time, and they do enjoy the service.
No matter where you are headed, frequent riders say it doesn't take long to get the hang of things.
You'll learn where those buses go, and then you can learn where to connect. And if you don't know a bus driver, ask a bus driver. The bus drivers are always helping me.
Welcome to Pasco County, the fastest-growing county in the Tampa Bay area. The Pasco Board of County Commissioners is a high-performing organization with twenty-seven hundred employees representing fifty-seven lines of business, serving nearly six hundred thousand people over seven hundred forty square miles, and we're always looking for talented people to join our team. This is your opportunity to help make your community a better place to live, work, and play. If you're ready to be part of a great success story, consider a career with Pasco County Government, recently recognized as a top workplace for 2021. Opportunities include careers in utilities, public works, traffic operations, solid waste, animal services, public transportation, information technology, libraries, parks, human services, recreation and natural resources, administration, senior services, fire rescue, nine-one-one, fleet, building construction services, code enforcement, planning, environmental science, and so much more. Plus, our benefits package is tough to beat. We offer employee wellness centers, health, vision, and dental benefits, paid holidays and tuition reimbursement, just to name a few. We are local government reimagined. We're progressive, innovative, and in many areas, Pasco County is leading the way. Want to learn more about what we do and how you can be part of it? Visit mypasco.net and click on Job and Volunteer Opportunities. Our team is more than twenty-seven hundred strong, your neighbors, friends, and even family members. Come join Pasco County and make a difference every day.